Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Comprehensive Job Creation Plan. Today's February 27, 2019. I'm Paul Krikorian, joined by my colleagues, Mr. Blumentfeld and Mr. Harris Dawson, and we're ready to begin today's meeting. Members, I would have asked that item two be taken up on consent and approved on consent, but I believe we do have cards on that matter. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and get our multi-item speakers taken care of. So I'm going to go ahead and call Wayne Spindler. Oh, Wayne Spindler is not speaking today. Is Yvonne Michelle Autry? Yes, okay, come on up, Ms. Autry, if you would like. And you have two minutes on your agenda items, and then you can go ahead and take your general public comment separately.
Yes, in terms of job creation, of course, the most obvious, I think, and most immediate need is to create jobs and opportunities for the indigent primarily. I'm speaking for the homeless, indigent veterans of Skid Row and the regentrification of Skid Row. I would envision the row, right, regentrified Skid Row. So we need to not only create housing, which I addressed at an earlier previous meeting, and creating jobs so that those that are able to re-enter society, the jobs need to be sourced from the plethora of a Skid Row, we call Skid Roadians, and some are ready or willing with the help of USAP, Coalitions, LA CAN, to hopefully re-enter society or be self-employed. We, again, need the jobs to source those that are living in poverty, living in the street, the indigent in Skid Row. Especially, I'm speaking for primarily African-American people, but not exclusively. So this is most important because, again, I'm not a racist, but I see so many, I speak, read, and write a number of languages, but I know that there are immigrants that are not proficient and not fluent in English and undocumented and are employed. So I want this on the record, and I'm requesting that there is a greater number or an increase in jobs that are created, whether it's construction, the availability of or opening jobs to black men or women that can work on the construction sites, whether it's maintenance. I see primarily African-American people that are employed as security guards, and we're grateful for that. However, we can do more than just clean the street and then secure buildings. So I'm asking for an increase in availability of jobs for the indigents, especially Skid Row residents.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else named Autry? I think we had your name on there twice. Is Michael Hunt here?
I'm sorry, any veterans?
Thank you. Red Chief, no, okay. Mr. Porter? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Just general comments, I wanted to just stress the need for creating jobs in our communities. We, I work in the Skid Row area for United Coalition East, which is a program, a social model, and we're one of the partners at The Refresh Spot, which is funded through LASSA, but it's an example of how you can engage community members in addressing immediate needs in their neighborhood and create jobs and create living wage jobs. We have employees that work at The Refresh Spot who are currently homeless. And we recently, one of the partners is Goodwill, and Goodwill recently announced, we're at an event they hosted, that the mayor was there and Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas, they made a commitment to create 15,000 new jobs, living wage jobs, in the next three years to address poverty. And so we're excited about that approach. I had a few notes I just wanted to highlight is we support social enterprise, creating community jobs to address local public health and safety concerns. Another example is the pit stop where they've been hiring staff to monitor public restrooms because there's a crisis around the city in access to public toilets, water, hand washing. But also, we can look, think outside the box and expand. There could be folks that service and monitor park restrooms, expand park hours, expand park access. What else? So I also have some concerns about some of the proposed mixed-use projects, and we do drug prevention. So we have concerns about alcohol uses and economic development. There's a big need for a diversity of equitable investment in our community, but there are many community costs linked to alcohol sales, and we caution efforts to expedite on sales. But like I said, we need to address immediate needs when we think about economic development and engage in folks with lived experience. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there Ms. Hawkins or Augustus? Is there anyone else who wanted to, okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is, hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Aileen Bertha. I also work for a prevention program in Skid Row under our parent organization, Social Model Recovery Systems. I'm here to voice my concerns and comments around this plan. I wanted to discourage any over-concentration of alcohol realtors, especially in Skid Row recovery community. I wanted to discourage misuse projects like apartments with restaurants. I also wanted to encourage that each project had a public hearing for the community to give input if any projects are adopted throughout with this plan. Additionally, with the possibility of creating pilot programs, there's a huge need for diversity of equitable uses, like neighborhood-based stores and job opportunities. For instance, you can look into a good food zone model developed by the Los Angeles Food Policy Council and that the city adopted in January for South Los Angeles. I encourage you to look at the language around this plan so that it caters to every community needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Herman?
Yep, it's very difficult getting a minimum wage job, especially like at Kmart or Big Lots. You know, I come to country with Jewish transportation. I do not know why I get minimum wage job when I have experience cooking food and cleaning your house. But for some reason, some foolish man said to me, "You know Development Department, they provide job." I said, "No, no, Jew don't provide job. Jew make you work for less, minimal, minimum wage CEO." So I say, "Yo, hey, Jew not me. I Jew to work in the United States because Jew people pay more." No, Jew people pay less because Jew are tight.
Okay, you're not speaking to any agenda items.
I am speaking on citywide economics, Mr. Goat, and you know I, under the physical terms of strategy, know goddamn well Jew don't like economic development because you only provide 15 fucking dollar. I work more for 15 fucking dollars jerking off alone, but you jerk me off for $30, I get the fuck out the city hall. You want to fuck with Jew, I fuck with Jew. Because you fuck Armenian, I fuck your fat wife and your H-rag fucking son, you fucking fool. I got two minutes.
Sit down, please. I've instructed you to sit down quietly. Sit down.
Fuck you.
You're done. Okay, Mr. Herman is disrupting the meeting. Can you ask him to leave, please?
You didn't give me a warning, asshole.
You're warned every single meeting that we have. You're not required to get a warning. You're disrupting this meeting. You're continuing to disrupt this meeting. Get out.
Give me the chance and then respond. Fucking junior, black, white asshole.
And we have other folks in this meeting that were dismissed from our morning regular council meeting. I just want to, for the city attorney and for the record, to acknowledge that we have those folks present in the room now.
And for folks who aren't familiar with the circus that we experience in some of our council meetings and hearings, or pretty much all of them, I apologize. We hear the most vile racist disgusting comments at every single one of our meetings by a relative handful of the 4 million people who live in this city. And so it is an unfortunate aspect of public service and public meetings. So I apologize to everybody here who has to listen to that. I'm sorry, ma'am, could you tell me your name again? Yes? Okay, I did have your name. I apologize, I just skipped over it. So you had spoken, thank you. And I think that concludes our agenda item speakers. So, members, if there's no objection to approving item number two on consent and adopting the EWD report as amended by the Economic Development Committee?
Phil Jackson.
Okay, so will be the action of the committee.
Mr. Chair, if I could briefly read item two into the record?
Sure.
Item two, EWD report relative to governance document management framework for the Los Angeles Small Business Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. And then that will bring up item number one.
Item number one, CLA CAO EWD reports relative to the citywide economic development strategy and five-year plan.
Mr. Spindler says he requests.
Ms. Autry, thank you, I run the meeting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Aurora Brass here with the CAO's office. Our office was requested to report by our committee to, on the draft, citywide economic development strategy and five-year implementation plan that was prepared by the Economic and Workforce Development Department by their consultant HR and advisors, as well as their EWD's related trends, metal, and recommendations. The CAO report before you provides an overview of the draft SEDs, and we also include recommendations that prior to council taking action on the requests included in their report that the EWD report back regarding a recommended implementation option for the strategy, along with a prioritization of any of the strategies or activities, as well as information as to whether other city departments propose to implement these various activities in the strategy concur with the recommendations. Subsequent to our reports released, the department did report back in response to that report, and the CLA has recently released their report on the SEDs as well.
Yes, good afternoon, John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. And before you, is a report prepared by our office in response to requests from the committee to evaluate the draft SEDs that was prepared by EWD, Economic Workforce Development Department. This ad hoc committee was created, what, three and a half years ago? Four and a half years ago? It's been a little bit of a while to jumpstart creation of job and using our city resources to do that. You held a wide range of hearings over the course of the years that resulted in the creation of the jobs plan that included a wide range of issues to address procurement, to address a variety of ways the city can align its resources to enhance and expand job development in the city. Creation of the business assistance teams was in that report. Creation of a marketing program was in that report. And council, this committee reviewed and approved, prepared that report, as did the Economic Development Committee and the council. And one of the recommendations in there was to prepare a citywide or comprehensive economic development strategy that extended and expanded the work that you had done there. And in particular, to give the city the ability to apply for economic development administration grants with the federal government, again, to expand our ability to obtain new resources for economic development in the city. And so EWD went forward with that recommendation. They hired a consultant who prepared the report in front of you. There's a great deal of value in the report that was presented. They held a wide range of community meetings around the city, obtained a great deal of input, and that guided the development of the strategies that are presented here. In addition, they prepared a very extensive analysis of the city economy that is one of the exhibits here in the report. It's basically 500-page report, plus, there's a lot of data, a lot of information. It's very tightly connected and interwoven. But as we did our review at your instruction, we found that there were a few things that were missing or some things that were not quite clear. And so in our report, we've identified a number of revisions that we would recommend to the draft SEDs to ensure that a final SED incorporates all of the actions that the council had adopted in the jobs plan, incorporates some of the recommendations that have been adopted in some of your hearings on municipal banking, for example, that the SEDs actually fully incorporates the asset management strategy that the council had adopted. There are a few things where, over the last three or four years, the council had adopted and advanced that were not clearly addressed in the SEDs. And I think this document, if it put all of those in place, would very much align all of the work that the council's done over the last three or four years and advance all of that work into the future. One of the main, so the way the SEDs is structured, there are eight broad strategies, and they are issue, they address issues such as ensuring that there is equity in the city's programs, that we provide assistance to existing businesses and industries, that we seek out new growth industries and bring those into the city. So they're very broad strategies. Then there is a five-year action plan, and the five-year action plan includes 16 actions with several dozen specific program ideas for implementation. And so what we have identified are ways to revise those implementation processes within those 16 strategies, and we recommend that you would make those revisions and clarifications. Instruct city staff to go back, finalize a document, and come back to you within 45 days so that we can have a final SEDs. We can apply for EDA grants, and we can start bringing in money to support economic development in the city. Once we get past that, there are a couple of big issues that we see that we need to continue to address further. The two, the two main ones are developing regional, well, local community development zones of some sort. Unfortunately, the federal government and the state government eliminated empowerment zones, they eliminated enterprise zones, they eliminated enterprise communities, and then the biggest of all, they eliminated redevelopment. And so the city has lost a lot of tools that it can use to do local community redevelopment. New tools have come along, but they are in the, they are in morphing. They're changing and growing, and there are opportunities in those tools. We need now to focus on those and figure out how we can actually activate those in the city effectively and bring those resources available to you to do more focused work. And those are the EIFDs, the CRIAs, possibly the NFTs, as well as the Jedi zones that the council had adopted in the jobs plan. So we would like to get this done and then really bring in some focus on those. And I think the EDA grants, for example, will be able to provide planning funding so that you can actually go forward and start organizing those zones to help very focused local community development projects. The other area where we see some room for work is in the area of developing accountability measures. So there's, there, the city has no lack of economic development programs. In the review that we did and in looking at the SEDs and looking at other cities that have high-performing economic development programs, City of Los Angeles has more programs than all of those cities that have been identified. But our programs are very dispersed across a wide range of departments, and we need to do more work to bring them together, make sure that there's more accountability in the work that they're doing and that they're able to actually tell the story of the work that they're doing better. So, for example, when we did our last municipal bank report, one of the things that we reported to you is that the family source centers, which is, they have a financial literacy program. It's part of your economic development program. They have a budget of $13 million, and they help, I forget what the number is, tens of thousands of families. If with another million dollars, they can help another 5,000 families. Or with another $200,000, they can do quick, one-stop assistance and help another 10,000 families, something like that. So you don't have available to you the data to identify which programs you would want to possibly move forward into the future. You need to have that data available to you. You also need a tool to help when you make recommendations for work to be done, that the departments are doing the work and that the reports are moving forward. Things have been a little bit slow. And so we're looking at ways to identify some accountability tools to ensure that there's coordination among the departments, that we generate data to help you make better decisions and identify places where you can more effectively put the resources that we have to work. And so we recommend, in our report, we have a recommended option of creating either an economic development commission or a working group, a task force, some body that would do that kind of accountability work for you. And then we had, and related to that is some kind of a group that does the data analysis and brings that data together in a way that's meaningful for your work. So that's our report in a nutshell, and we can go into depth. There are staff from EWD, from CAO, and from the CLA available to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Well, thank you very much. This has been a long time coming, and thank you for the work that you've done in analyzing this and the suggestions for additional coordination with some of the recommendations that we've already established. I think those are all recommendations well taken. It's, we've waited a long time to get this done, and it feels like we're really close to the finish line, and I'm pleased to see it. So I think that your suggestions about having a more integrated, complete SEDs is appropriate. But, members, you have questions about the report as it's before us? Mr. Blumentfeld?
Related to sort of a follow-up, you were talking about, one of the weaknesses is we don't have a coordinated delivery system for all of this. And the initial report had created the new Strategic Technical Services Group, and you're saying that's not the way to go. So how do we, how do we get that? And I, you know, I don't care what it's called or what it is, but it's the problem that you identified. How do we get that coordination? Should it be a group of some sort? Is it just CAO, CLA, or what do you recommend?
So that's, that's, that particular recommendation in the SEDs has been one of the biggest challenges to evaluate. There were actually four recommendations of ways to go about doing it. One was to create an in-house, in EWD group that would do the work. The second would be to hire some consultants to do some work. The third was to use an existing nonprofit organization to do the work. The fourth was to create a brand-new nonprofit organization. In our analysis, what we identified was that in the jobs plan, you actually already created the unit within EWD. The jobs plan created the business assistance team, and then the EWD already created an asset management unit. And those were the two key services that the STSG was intended to perform. And it just so happens that EWD, in their follow-up report that the CAO had mentioned, recommended to you to form a unit within EWD to provide those services. So they actually exist, and they've been created. They've been, they started up about a year ago, and they're just getting going. So that coordinated set of services is now exists and is in place. It's just called a, it's called something else. It's not called STSG, and if the department tomorrow wanted to call it that, they could do that, and you would be in place, you would be in alignment with that action. So it's there. What we were, what we're looking at in this accountability piece is to bring in all of the other city departments to provide support to that, basically, and provide support to the Economic Workforce Development Department in their, in their actual requirement to provide that kind of data to you.
It's just about, it's, the name's not important. It's just about providing the support to the group that exists now to do it.
Right.
Separate issue, I was looking at the maps, like the, I was actually surprised. I see the high, the high unemployment area in my district is actually the wealthiest area in my district. So I'm assuming that that includes, like, retirees and one working family member? Because that was, that jumped out at me, I'm like, that can't be right.
It was very surprising, some of the data that was shown. So we just recently ran the data from the December, I forget the name of the file. The American Community Survey data, five-year survey data from the Census Bureau. So we can actually go back and verify and confirm that that is correct, but that is the employment data that was in the ACS.
That probably hasn't changed in five years. That's a separate question, which is, I know this data does change very quickly and in terms of a lot of the, this kind of information. But we only refresh it, what, every five years or?
We should refresh it every year, and that is one of the things, I think, are the group, the working group that we've been talking about, or the commission, however you want to go about doing that, they should do that. They should bring together that demographic data to you on a regular basis so that you can monitor that and track those changes over time.
And then obviously, we have to, we have to make sure we take a look deep into the numbers because what appear, you know, as I said, when I saw the high unemployment area, knowing my district, that is not the area that needs the jobs plan. You know, it's the other areas. Another generalized thing, since we're not getting too deep into the weeds, but I noticed, it appeared at least, and I didn't read all 500 pages, I'll be honest, that most of the strategies deal with economic development directly, but not so much. I always look at the economic development sort of two hands. One is areas where we need to have a helping hand, and the other, we just need to get out of the way. And I didn't see a lot of, I saw the word streamline once or twice, but do we need to also have a section of this? Or maybe it's already in there where we're focused on the economic development that is the city getting out of its way, you know, streamlining things, preventing the over permitting? Or how do you see that aspect of economic development fitting into this?
That's usually the first strategy in an economic development strategy is how can we first get out of the way? And, you know, it's one of those active-passive things, right? So we're actively looking for ways that we can just make business better. And so I think, I think we probably need to go back and take a look at that and see if there are elements that we can add to the implementation strategies to do that. So if you would like us to do that, we can.
We've been doing a lot of that stuff, well, like all these things. We're, part of this, part of the game here is identifying what we're already doing, right? And then piecing it all together. But I guess I'd just like to see some of that aspect put together as well of the getting out of the way portion of economic development.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Blumentfeld. I had the exact same reaction that, you know, sort of the first item on the list, I would have thought would have been, here are the things that the city does that cause delays, cause additional expense, causes to be uncompetitive with surrounding cities, and so on. And we have addressed, in fact, a lot of those issues over the course of the work of this ad hoc committee and, you know, other work by the council and by the mayor's office as well. So in part, I think if we can capture some of what we've already done, as you, you know, were speaking, Mr. Wickham, about integrating this into the report, that would be helpful. But also, you know, maybe it's outside of the scope of this report. Maybe it's in a separate report that this committee can develop as part of its work product is kind of a pretty specific menu of things to do to get out of the way, to reduce costs, to expedite processing, to reduce bureaucratic inertia, and those sorts of things. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Blumentfeld raised a lot of issues that I was concerned about. I have one sort of line of questioning that I don't think you all addressed, but... addressed, but um uh we touch up on the topic where we talk about the municipal bank and the banking deserts. So, you know, at this moment, uh Bank of America has plans to close every branch in the Eighth Council District, and they showed up in my office to tell me that directly. And it just, it occurred to me that, while I'm sitting across from the table from them with very little leverage, because the municipal banking measure had just failed when they told me this, um that there actually are state and federal laws about lending uh across geography and across communities, but I just, I didn't know or think about that function as it relates to business development. So, you know, how do we, as a city, say, you know, hey, we have this, you know, we have this council district that's all high unemployment except for a couple neighborhoods, three neighborhoods? How does the city confront the banking industry and say, how are you, or how are you working or not working with small business people in that space?
Right.
Because that's the city sort of using its regulatory strength to let the private market um do what it won't do without intervention.
Right. One of the recommendations in the August municipal bank report was to um put together the task force on banking zones and and find some way to create a development, economic development tool to incentivize banks to actually open branches in those banking deserts. So we need to incorporate that in the SEDs, we need to get that task force working, we need to find some ways to do that. And it it may be that there are assets that we have or that we're developing in those areas where we can bring them to bear and in making them available to community banks or or credit unions in a way that would incentivize them to come into those communities. So I think that's, that is one of the things that we absolutely need to include in here, and we need to do the research on that and move that forward.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Anything else, members? Mr. Spindler? Mr. Spindler? I I called you earlier to speak, you were not in the room. As a courtesy, I'm gonna allow you to speak on both matters now, member. If there's no objection to reconsideration of uh item number two.
I don't know.
I have an objection to-
Yeah, my, he's the objecting.
I have an objection to Mr. Spindler speaking. Mr. Spindler was thrown out of council this morning. I thought we had a policy that you didn't speak for the rest of the day if that happened.
No, Madam City.
He disrupts this meeting, um he'll be barred.
Two in a row? All right.
Sorry, fool. So, you see, you you gave Michelle Autry three minutes to speak, you gave her two minutes and one minute, so you didn't give Mr. Herman his three minutes, and he's supposed to give me my-
You're speaking to the agenda items.
Right, but why are you giving her three minutes?
You're speaking to the agenda items, or you're done?
Okay, nigga. So, you chief legislative analyst, you fucking say hey, you fuck up, you got no job plan for five years, and the Bank of America now closing every branch in the Eighth District as part of its plan. Why? Because they got fools in their district that died working and paying the bills. Then the fiscal impact statement I read said, oh, well, that's the Eighth District, it ran by fools, so they're gonna close all the motherfucking branches and not work. And then the EWD DDD report is a governance document for the small business. I don't know if you have a small business commission, because I went yesterday and they says, with Mr. Price, they says, Dwayne, and I said, yes, and they says, we niggas don't have a small business commission yet because the goddamn city is too much on drugs, and we're trying to get the money to put our small business commission together, so we need to come together. We need to come together and create jobs. But I can create the job, but you fighting me. So I'm bringing all the niggas over to Encina, I'm bringing all the niggas over to Woodland Hills, I'm bringing all the niggas into the First District. I won't bring them back, but I'm evicting myself from the Eighth District and the Ninth District, because I gots to do, as a black man, I gotta be able to fucking work in this fucking city away from goats.
All right. So, members, with that, um again, we'll take up item number two, and if there's no objection, we'll adopt the EWD report as amended by the Economic Development Committee. Without objection, that will be the action of the committee. On item number one, uh I'd like to adopt the EWD report as amended with a change to recommendation four, uh to instruct the CLA to form a city department working group tasked with oversight and tracking of economic development issues and projects. And then that should be included as part of the um report. How, Mr. Wickham, you mentioned you would be prepared to bring that back approximately when?
We recommend forty-five days. Your CLA's EWD are already working on all of the elements required to satisfy the EDA grant application. We've actually been talking to EDA as well, and they're ready to give us some cursory review to make sure we're in line.
Great. So um then that will be part of that report back uh in forty-five days.
And, Mr. Chair, briefly, the committee should be adopting the CLA report as amended.
Oh, thank-
You said EWD, CLA.
Yes, thank you, thank you, good catch. All right. That will be the action of the committee, and there being no other business before the committee, we are adjourned.